This meeting is called to order. This is a special Board of Supervisors meeting scheduled for Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023 at 2:30 PM. We are in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room at 1415 Melody Lane, Building G, Bisbee, Arizona 85603. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. We'll begin with the roll call. District one.
Crosby is here.
District two.
Supervisor English is present.
And District three, represented by myself, Supervisor Judd. Um, there is a full board present. Members of the public may also attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app or via phone by calling 602-609-7513 or 888-680-6714, conference ID 188143201. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 for direction. The board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on this agenda. To speak on an agenda item, complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the board prior to the start of the meeting. Today's meeting is an appeal of the Hearing Officer's Order in Case 22-004343 regarding zoning violation number V-22-004343. During the meeting, the board will follow the Cochise County Hearing Officer Rules of Procedure on Zoning and Building Code violations as adopted by Ordinance 021-95. Our request for review of the Hearing Officer's Order by the Board of Supervisors was timely filed and a copy is in front of the board. The appellate is appealing the Hearing Officer's finding of fact, Item Two of the Hearing Officer's Conclusion of Law and Item Three of the Hearing Officer's Order. The board has received the record of the proceedings before the Hearing Officer. Neither the appellate nor the zoning inspector provided a written memorandum to the board pursuant to Rule 22. The parties are as follows. Appellant, Elquin LLC, Owen Lounsdell; zoning inspector, Dan Coxworth Development Services Director, who has delegated to Paul Correa, Civil Deputy County Attorney, and Kristy McLaughlin, who will be available to answer any questions from the board regarding development services. Rule 24, in its entirety as follows, will be followed in this proceeding. Rule 24, disposition of the Board of Supervisors. The defendant and zoning inspector or their designated representatives will have an opportunity to present oral arguments to the Board of Supervisors. Each party will be given not more than 10 minutes to present their oral arguments. After consideration of an appeal, the Board of Supervisors may increase, decrease, or modify any sanction imposed by the Hearing Officer and may affirm the action of the Hearing Officer. Affirm in part and reverse in part, and if necessary, remand for further proceedings, or reverse the action of the Hearing Officer and if necessary, remand for further proceedings. Written notice of the formal action by the Board of Supervisors shall be delivered or mailed by certified mail to all parties within 10 days of their decision. All decisions shall be final. Today's order of business will be as follows. Appellant, Elquin LLC, Owen Lounsdell, will have 10 minutes to present his argument. Then following zoning inspector, Paul Correa, will have 10 minutes to present his argument. And then following that, members of the public will have three minutes each to address the board. Pursuant to Rule 20, the board's review is limited to the record of the proceedings before the Hearing Officer, and no new evidence may be introduced. So it is time for Mr. Lounsdell to present his 10-minute oral argument. Yes, please step to the microphone. And for the record, state who you are and your address.
Owen Thomas Lounsdell, 1376 South Lee Street, St. David, Arizona. To begin with, a major part of the basis of this appeal is because the gallery was effectually controlling the proceedings of the hearing. The gallery was hollering out during the proceedings, interrupting, and even supplying questions to the court, testifying without being witnesses. Consequently, the proceedings were tainted. I will review this a little bit more in my statement. But to the reason I say this is because I am requesting that this hearing be closed or an alternative, that the gallery be admonished to maintain the proper decorum during the hearing. Moreover, the members of the gallery at the March 30th hearing do not have the operational capacity or clearances to hear testimony involving operational security. Since the true essence of this hearing affects national security, I further request that this hearing be closed. Furthermore, during the last hearing, the gallery made statements on behalf of the Department of Defense concerning military training. The persons making these statements do not have the authority or expertise to speak factually on the matter at hand. Thus, their statements are simply conjecture. I do have someone here with me today that is an expert on military training, both on and off military installations. If the council is inclined to hear from him, I would ask again that this hearing be closed at his request for purposes of maintaining national security. He is here in part due to the fact that people from the gallery in the March 30th hearing, in effect, testified claiming I was not working with the DOD. Prelimarily, I am asking that this hearing be closed to the public. After the council is done deciding on that, I would like to finish my opening statement.
We are going to refer to legal. Please.
It's a public hearing, it will not be closed.
Okay. We cannot close it.
Even on the basis of national security?
It's a public hearing, it cannot be closed.
Okay. All right, I will keep some things redacted and move on to my opening. I appeal the Hearing Officer's decision for the following reasons. I was denied an opportunity to examine the gallery, which essentially became a form of undisclosed witnesses. The hearing started with the gallery deciding who would get their pound of flesh. Who would present evidence against me unopposed and unexamined? One after another made exaggerated claims taken for the truth. If the state wishes them to be witnesses, let them be witnesses. The state should not provoke an unfounded ambush from undisclosed witnesses and then take the word as gospel. I'll give an example. One of these undisclosed witnesses claimed firing went on every day, from sunup to sundown. This is demonstrably false, as evidenced by the report of the zoning commissioner. The gallery even went so far as to become respectable. Running the show, multiple times, the people in the gallery would yell out their disagreements with my statements and even questions for the administrative law judge to ask me. Not only is this a violation of Rule Nine of the Cochise County Hearing Officer Rules of Procedure, which states you may ask questions, but the judge would adopt their questions demonstrating bias against the defense. At the very least, it held a strong appearance of impropriety. With regards to the gallery, only those opposed to me were given the right to speak. Specifically, the Hearing Officer asked for them to speak. Finally, evidence was disclosed to me on March 30th, the morning of the hearing. This was trial by surprise and not allowable. I'm not a sophisticated litigant, I'm not a fancy lawyer, but even I knew this was inappropriate. Who can present their case to a mob that already decided against me? It was not appropriate how the proceedings took place? Heck, the only real witness that had authored a report stated he never even went down to my ranch or heard a single shot. However, decision was made, and it sure seemed that decision was made before I even got there. At the very least, I asked that this case is remanded back to the lower court, providing me the opportunity to actually examine the people and these alleged witnesses properly. To provide proper relief, I request that this council overrule the Hearing Officer and review the actual evidence, not the cries of the gallery, to see it as in my favor and allow my ranch to maintain its activities, activities that are not in violation of zoning, activities that are not the primary purpose of my ranch and are permissible by law. Thank you.
So now we will hear from Mr. Correa for his 10-minute oral argument.
Good afternoon. The board is here, sitting as a quasi-judicial appellate body. And the question before the board is whether the record that has been presented on appeal, which shows everything that the administrative hearing officer had to consider, supports his decision. So the administrative hearing officer received from our Development Services Enforcement Section a memo about 15 days before the hearing, and then later, very close to the hearing, a supplemental memorandum that I had prepared. And that sets out the enforcement letters and the complaint alleging violations of our zoning ordinances. And those are evidence. Those include statements by Chris Saylor, our inspector, who has visited the property and collected information statements from neighbors. The neighbors were also given an opportunity to speak at the hearing. And as the appellant here has mentioned, that was at the request of the Hearing Officer. He has discretion, as an administrative law judge, basically, to accept evidence and consider what he believes is relevant. And it's certainly, I think, a community-facing posture to take to listen to the neighbors and then hear what they have to say and weigh that. But if you took that out of the room, you know, at the end of the day, there was sufficient evidence for the administrative hearing officer to properly find that Mr. Lounsdale and his entity are required to apply for a special use permit under our zoning ordinances for the activities that are going on at his property. And there is no dispute, I think, for Mr. Lounsdale about the sorts of activities that have occurred there and that he wishes to continue to have occur there, which include live firing exercises by law enforcement and perhaps Department of Defense personnel. There was no evidence of the hearing, you know, showing contracts with DOD personnel, and that may be an open issue, but it's not an issue that's before the board here. The question is whether, if shooting is going on and there is a shooting range there, our zoning ordinance requires there to be a special use permit. There were three things that I pointed up to the Hearing Officer that require a special use permit under our code, and I've given you guys a copy of certain documentation. So we have a special use authorization section in our zoning ordinance, which is 607. And in the page I gave you, Chairman English, it starts sort of at the bottom, and then it continues with the list. And this is a long list of things that the county has already recognized and put into our ordinance that require a special use permit. They include things like guest lodging, recreational vehicle parks, and they include outdoor firearms, educational operations, which frequently comes up in our planning and zoning meetings. And even if somebody wants to install like an air strip for an ultralight or a halipad, that requires a special use permit. So through the special use permit process, an applicant can ask for special permission to engage in these sorts of activities and work with development services to prepare a presentation and an application that's then submitted to our planning and zoning committee. And I attend all those meetings. You know, we frequently hear from neighbors who say somebody next door wants to start a horse training operation. Typically, what their worries are, are traffic. When people live out in the country, they're worried about people that they don't know coming in and out of their neighborhood and impacts to the roads. And so through the special use application permit, the applicant is able to work cooperatively with his neighbors to address those things, work with development services, and then present to our commission, you know, a proposal. You know, and mostly they're approved because we want people to be able to use their property. But it facilitates cooperation among neighbors, you know, and compromise where that's appropriate. And it gives us a process to do proper planning in the county, maintain everybody's property values, and protect the quiet and use and enjoyment of neighboring properties. It also gives development services an opportunity to make sure that people are complying with our zoning ordinances and Arizona statutes if they apply. So that's the orderly way to do it. And at the end of the day, what the Hearing Officer ordered was that Alquin LLC and Mr. Lounsdale simply submit an application for a special use permit for the operations that they've been engaging in, which include educational operations, a shooting range of some sort, and apparently, you know, some aircraft operations. There was video that was posted online of a Blackhawk doing some sort of operations around the area that I think involves some sort of training exercise of DOD. So those things are, of course, of concern to the neighbors, and they are certainly required under our zoning ordinance to have a special use permit in place. The information that was provided to the administrative hearing officer was enough for him to find, you know, his facts and issue an order requiring that this application be submitted. And that's all that is being required. The order has three things. It requires the defendant, in that case now the appellant, to apply for and obtain a special use authorization and permit for a shooting range, subject to conditions required by the Cochise County Planning and Zoning Commission and compliant with Arizona law. I don't think anybody would disagree that that's an appropriate thing to require. Number two, to apply for and obtain a special use authorization permit for any education operations. And there was evidence that the shooting range is used as an education opportunity for law enforcement and for hunters. It's used commercially. There was advertisements, I think, for a $2,300, like Who's Dear Guided Hunting Trip? The hunters were able to go and get some tips and training about how to use their firearms for this kind of long-range hunting. And three, to cease and desist all non-permitted operations identified in the complaint, including any shooting range activities and any shooting of any kind within a mile of any occupied structure, any training or educational operations, and any handling of any aircraft of any kind on the property. So what the order requires is Alquin and Mr. Lounsdale to take a pause while they go through the proper procedure to get a special use permit if that can be obtained. And that is the order. If the applicant doesn't comply, there is a penalty, you know, provision. That's not something before the board at the time. In the packet of material, there's a supplemental pre-hearing memorandum that we gave to the Hearing Officer, and it includes some screenshots of what was posted on pages that were advertising the Alquin property. Those will show you, the board, what sort of operations were going on there that, you know, have caused concern by the neighbors. And it shows that it's not something that's disputed. That's an admission of the appellate, in this case, of the things that he was doing. So I think the record is enough for the board here, sitting in its capacity as a review board, to affirm the order of the administrative hearing officer. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Are there any questions by the board?
Yes, sir. I'm looking at the backside of this under order.
Yes.
This is titled Cochise County Hearing Officer.
Yes.
Number two, it says, "Apply for and obtain a special use authorization and permit for any educational operations."
Yes.
And when I look at this other page that has the list of activities under 607, are these activities under 607 further defined? For instance, under 60725, educational services? Is it further defined? Because to say any educational services or any educational operations is infinitely broad. And I don't know that that's necessarily appropriate to say any educational services. And basically, that goes for the last sentence under number three, where it says, "Any training." It's the same issue, though. So I think that for the Hearing Officer to come up with that kind of broad wording without it being backed up in our regulations under 607 is probably a little too broad there. Any comment?
No, thank you for that question. I agree that, well, first, let me answer your question. There is no definitional section that defines every one of these terms.
Okay.
And I believe that's by design. And having worked with the Planning and Zoning Commission, I can tell you that this is a useful way for this zoning ordinance to be written because it allows flexibility.
I understand.
Typically, at the hearings, when somebody presents a special use application, the zoning commissioners will speak among themselves. They have the opportunity to ask questions and get a sense of what is actually happening. They hear from the neighbors. We very frequently have educational operations that impact the neighborhood. And typically, what the concern is, as I mentioned, that you've got a quiet neighborhood with nothing going on, and then somebody starts some sort of training. I think the last one that I mentioned was a horse training operation. That was an actual case.
Right.
And so all of a sudden, you have people coming into the neighborhood that the neighbors don't know. You might have events going on where there's impact on the roads. And those are the sorts of things the special use application process allows to be worked out for conditions to be placed on the applicant, you know, to enter into a cooperative agreement to maintain the road and that sort of thing. And if, you know, if it's too extreme of a burden on the neighborhood, the recommendation from the commission might be to, or from development services, might be to deny the application, and the zoning commission might deny it. But that is by design, I think, Tom, that it allows some flexibility.
I understand. That's what I figured, and I'd be glad to yield to my colleagues here if they have any questions before I continue. But if they don't, that's okay, too, and I'll just continue. The last sentence of number three, which starts out cease and desist, and it says, after the colon, after the comma, after the colon, "any shooting of any kind within a mile away of any occupied structure, any training," or, well, that's basically a mile away from structure. No shooting within a mile of structures, occupied structures. That's reasonable. And I don't know if you can answer that, but perhaps Mr. Lounsdale can address this when he gets a chance to talk to us again. Can Elquin comply with that restriction of no shooting within a mile of any occupied structure? Because his ranch is very big.
No, I don't know the answer. That, again, is something that the special use application process would allow to be worked in.
That's fine.
I have a logistical question. If we uphold the decision by the zoning authority? Oh, okay. If we uphold that, then it looks like there's still, all these things are here. He needs to apply for a special use authorization. He needs to apply and obtain that special use authorization. The two authorizations, he could still do that. That's his action forward. We're not ending anything for anybody today.
A hundred percent.
Requiring what was previously adjudicated.
Yes, we require a special use application if there is a path forward for Elquin, if they follow that process.
I think, just as a comment in reading this, he felt that he had the right to do all this without any interference from government because of the size of his property and because he thought he was doing a good deed, I think, you know, for, at least in the reading for law enforcement. But when planning and zoning comes to someone, and we did pass these rules, so we have to take the responsibility for the special use authorization, and that list did come from us. And so these are the areas that this board or previous boards said, you need a special use if you want to do any of these things on your property. And with the advent of a lot of people now saying that I can do whatever I want to on my property, planning and zoning and the board says, no. There are some things you can do by right and some things you have to have special authorization to do. And it appears that some of the things that you were doing needed to have special authorization, and you were not willing to do that. But the Hearing Officer has said, these three things. You have to get a special use, you have to apply for authorization, and you have to stop what you're doing or be fined. And so I think that, again, if you are willing to look at the fact that it wasn't the Hearing Officer that decided all of these things that needed a special use authorization, it was the Board of Supervisors. And so we're asking you, if we affirm the actions of the Hearing Officer, to go through the process that we've designed for everyone, and then see if you can get a special use authorization by convincing the Planning and Zoning Commission and the people that will appear, that you will do them no harm. So I think you have a path forward. I think that we have to stick with our guns and say, we put this list together, and what you're wanting to do is on the list, so you need to have special use authorization.
Can I make one last comment? We heard Mr. Lounsdale, you know, expresses displeasure with the way that the hearing took place because there were neighbors who were animated. I witnessed that. I don't think that it resulted in an unfair hearing, but I do value, you know, due process. And I think that it's important that, you know, as we hear from the neighbors, that we maintain order in this house today and, you know, admonish them that they remain polite, they don't speak over each other, shout, cuss, any of that stuff. It should be orderly. That was my comment.
And I will make that admonishment. In this building, at any public hearing or any meeting, we do ask that the crowd remain civil, listen to one another, be very... We don't allow applause, we don't allow anything like that. Occasionally, we'll hear a little whispering or something, but that is about as much as we can tolerate. It does affect the proceedings, and you know that. So I would appreciate if you could keep that decorum that you just heard mentioned by Mr. Correa. Okay. And if you are finished, thank you very much. Time is up, anyway. All right. So now it's time for the public comment. I am going to be opening it to the public. I do have you written right here. I'll call you up one at a time. As stated previously, the board's review of the matter is limited to the record of proceedings before the Hearing Officer, and no new evidence may be introduced. So each of the public, each member of the public, has three minutes to address the board. And the first person that is asked to speak is John Herrick Smith. And please, when you approach the, there's going to be three minutes on a timer, when you might have done this before, right? But please give us your name and your address.
My name's John Smith. I live at 790 South Saban, St. David, Arizona. This is some of the things that I'm going to say that he's done. With no warning, Owen Lounsdale had military helicopters buzzing houses. He started a fire on top of the mountain in July. Claimed he had a DOD contract, which wasn't true. He's disrupted all the neighbors and all the animals in the neighborhood. And one of them was his wife's grandmother that borders his property. They shot automatic weapons and long-range guns that go over a mile. I'm always looking for bullet holes in my trailer and in the side of my house and in my vehicles. No, no.
You really are out of order. We can have discussion and talk with you later, but this is his three minutes.
Additional traffic is going up and down Saban Road from to his property, which is non-maintained county road. I feel my home and property values decrease with this shooting range. I feel it's dangerous to me, my wife, and my neighbors and my family. He has no consideration for anybody, including his own grandmother. They have shot hundreds, thousands of lead bullets in the ground, endangering people, wildlife, with environmental issues. He's been cited with a citation and was told to stop all activity, and he continues on shooting. He has already shown to all the neighbors what he has came He has already shown to all the neighbors what he is capable of doing and much more if he gets the okay for a shooting range. With my experience being around him, he can't believe anything what he says. A lot of the neighbors do not want to be involved because retaliation issues. They still continue to be unlawful shooting over there. And he has no consideration, no respect for rules, orders, or anything with the law. He does what he wants to do and gets away with it. At the March 30th officer hearing, he already admitted to be running a shooting range business, saying it was an essential business without the proper permits and credentials. And in my book, with all the evidence and all the experience with Owen in the last year and a half, he is very much guilty of the citation that he, that was issued.
All right. Our next speaker is Patricia Ann Smith.
Good afternoon, board. My name's Patricia Smith. I live at 790 South Saban Street in St. David. And in July of 2020, we moved out there to St. David where we chose to retire. It was a peaceful and quiet place. And shortly thereafter, well, before September of the next year, put that way, we found out that it, the property had been sold next to us, which is, is Elk and, one of Elk and Neil L C's properties. And we lived at the end of the road. Nobody can go past our house. We're at the end of the road. Well, we have a no trespassing and beware dog sign on our gate. At eight o'clock in the morning, somebody knocked on the door. Like, who's that? We looked at the door. There was a whole survey crew out in my front yard. He introduced himself as Owen Lonsdale, said he was going to take an easement through my property to access his newly purchased property. Well, there's no easement there. Okay. After, after some time went on, the easement was actually into my neighbor's yard, not mine. Okay. And so by September of 21, he was starting to work on, on the road up there. So we had a neighborhood meeting that included Jackie Watkins, the, the Cochise County engineer. And we had about a dozen neighbors and Owen and his employee Matt Cutlip were there. And he claimed he had a DOD contract and that's how he was going to pay for his mortgage. He was going to raise cattle up there and he was going to do military drones. But then by July of that year, we have helicopters buzzing our house and shooting, traffic increased, total nuisance. We called the sheriff department. The sheriff told us there was nothing they could do because it was military. Okay. We called the sheriff several times and were told it was military. They were, the helicopters were out there again in August. Then we called the fire department because they're shooting and going on out there, which is a fire danger, obviously in Arizona. I mean, recently, Mountain Lamont had a fire from some target shooting up there. And the Forest Service just published a document about the shooting, shooting range dangers. Okay. So I started doing some research. What do you mean DOD contract? Okay. Never could find a DOD contract. There were all sorts of websites advertising what he was carrying on. Okay. So we initiated a complaint. Boom. Websites go down. A new website comes up, password protected. Okay. He's opened a business called Low Kill Logistics, which is agricultural consultants. That does not jive with what was going on over there, in my opinion. We had police, Benson Police, U.S. Marshals, boom, times up. Thank you, anyway.
Thank you. So just a quick reminder, if it's not you, you're fine. Thank you. You did great. If it is new evidence that you have not spoken of before, don't, don't bring it up again, or don't bring it up at this time. So this, this should all be kind of a repeat for you, but thank you for coming. Okay. The next speaker is Robert E. Wright.
Good afternoon. My name's Robert Wright. I live at 580 South Homestead in St. David. But I lived there for 23 years, for the peace and quiet. The last year has not been no peace or quiet. Once the shooting starts, my dogs go inside, stay in the closet all day long. My neighbor's horse goes panicked. She can't go ride her horses no more. So his shooting that takes place over there is so loud, it's, you know, it's, it does damage to animals. Okay. And my wife likes to read a book on the front porch. She cannot read a book on the front porch, even though it's covered because of the shooting, it's loud. Just to the south of me is Billy Marshall's property. And on the, on the north side of her hill, he must have a target up there because he hits targets and it's, once he hits the targets, I have to leave the back yard because I don't know where the lead's going to go because the hill's way up high and we're kind of down low. And if there's a fire, who's going to put it out? Who's going to pay for the property damage? At various points in times, they shoot a 50 caliber going across from the east to the west and it sounded like a car coming off the hill. And a number of times we walk in the desert back behind to the west of us all the time. We used to. We can't do it no more because of the shooting. My dogs freak out and we don't know what direction they're shooting or where the lead's going to go. And there's people moving in back to the west of us and they butt up to his property. So they could be in the line of fire and there are new families putting in new houses. And they have young kids and there's a lot of shooting going on. And over time, if this gun range goes in, there's going to be a lot of lead in the ground and there's going to be a lot of water damage, lead in the water over time. And it's all going to flow down to St. David. And, and we're all on whales, everybody out there. And as far as the property damage went, or property, when I want to sell my house, if, and I have to list, is, is it a noisy neighborhood? I'm going to have to say yes. My property values is going to take a dump. Everybody's property values is going to take a dump because who wants to live next to a gun range? Nobody's going to buy it. And the, all the land out there, as far as I know, it is rural residential. Not, not for business. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Matthew Alexander Ludwig.
Are you guys able to hear me over Microsoft Teams?
Yes. Are, is, are you Matthew?
Yes, ma'am, I am. I watched surgery yesterday, so I wasn't able to get there.
We can hear you. Proceed.
Okay, okay, perfect. So I don't really have anything additional to say beyond my comments at the last hearing. Especially as Mr. Lonsdale has already, you know, seemingly acknowledged on multiple occasions now that not only were there commercial activities being conducted out there, but they intend to expand those different types of commercial activities, which is the purpose of this hearing. As you can probably tell, a lot of my, my neighbors, a lot of the comments would be more geared towards having a purpose in, and you know, some hearing on the special use authorization, which as it hasn't happened, I think that's why they're coming out here. So just to redirect and go off what the attorney said, that would be the appropriate forum. And as you can tell, there's a lot of angst out in this community. Especially as, you know, Mr. Lonsdale continues to imply that the people who've lined up against him either new to the area or he doesn't know who they are, when they're just simply all of the landholders surrounding him. And as he has such an extensive property, it just still seems strange that to conduct this activity, he's decided to do it on his part of the ranch that borders a number of other people's land parcels and residences. And that'll conclude my comments.
Okay. Thank you. Next speaker is Tricia Giradet. Are you online, Tricia?
I am. Thank you. I have nothing to add. Thank you.
All right. The next person to speak is Keela Watsey. And please, I need to remind you to say your name and then I'll know how to say it.
My name is Keela Watsey. My husband and I bought the parcel just west of 2981 on West Sullivan last summer. And we're unaware of the fact that a gun range was going to be operating behind us. Our address is actually in Chicago, so we're only here on occasion to check on the property and decide plans for building our dream house. And unfortunately, even on our sporadic visits to our property, we've heard shooting at every occasion since being able to come on a semi-regular basis in November of this last year. So we're just, I guess, looking for the opportunity to have a special use meeting to actually discuss options because our property is literally right behind what is going on on Mr. Longdale's land. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Thank you. We have one person who's signed in, opposed, but not speaking. So that is someone on West Coffee Drive in Benson, Arizona. So that is all we have as far as public, public to speak. So each member of the, oh, that is already done. All right. So the board might entertain something additional from one, one of our witnesses or both. Should we do that or should we just move on with our decision?
At this point, you've opened up the public hearing. You've heard from the public. You can close the public hearing. Unless the, if the board has additional questions.
I have a question.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and then we'll, okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And then we have additional questions for Mr. Correa or Mr. Lonsdale. Who would you like to ask the question?
Mr. Lonsdale. Go to the microphone, please. The way I understand, point number three of, of this document that says order, it, it's, it says you can shoot as long as you don't shoot within a mile of an occupied structure. Can you, can you comply with that?
The, the nature of that cease and desist, that order, if you will, has a bunch of misinformation and confliction with many of the Arizona revised statutes. Already granting uses and allowances, moreover mandating that sub municipalities can't negate those. So I'm a, I'm rather confused of what that that order actually means. Because when you start going through the uses of, you know, other entities, private landowner uses, allowable uses, and then you read that order, it's, it's pretty, pretty convoluted. So I, I don't know if I could answer your, your question a hundred percent unequivocally.
That's okay. Thanks anyway.
Any, any further questions?
No, that's the only one I had for you. Thank you.
Okay.
I am. I'm, it's time for a motion.
Um, a motion as in to vote on, on the proceedings?
Well, I, I feel strongly that you have something else you would like to say.
I do. I do have a lot. I'm, I'm a little bit confused at this juncture.
You've still had a few minutes left for your 10 minute presentation.
Okay. I, I apologize. I mean, I was, I'm just going on the, the order of proceedings and.
Let me just ask if we can allow that.
Okay. So the procedure is he has an argument, his oral argument, followed by Mr. Curry's oral argument and then comments and discussion. He does not get a second bite at the apple.
So we can only ask questions?
Yes.
Okay. So I, I, I guess you're familiar with, Mr. Lonsdale, I guess you're familiar with our stat, our zoning statutes, that, well.
Yes, I, I reviewed them before conducting or working with any other person to conduct their, their operation.
Okay. So why are you not, why do you not have to follow the zoning regulations like everyone else in the county again?
Okay. Again, I'm a little bit confused because I thought the basis and the purpose of this appeal was to determine whether the lower court made an error in their ruling. And that error is completely apparent. Allowing the gallery to control the questions and then also the bias that was introduced. I can, I can touch on those. So are we?
Well, that's not really the question. Really the question is why are you coming up with a, a project that doesn't need to, why do you not need to file the, follow the regulations that we have set out as a board in a county? Why are you exempt from that? That is something.
They are specifically exempt under a multitude of statutes, specifically citing 11 Arizona revised statutes, 11-811, 11-812, 133107, 17601, 133108, 322114. And then also the county planning and zoning ordinances, 1704 and 05. In addition, 2002 and 02 essential services exemptions. Effectually, what these state, and I'll, I'll just get into a couple of them. Bear with me. So if we look at 133108, for example, D, a political subdivision of the state shall not enact any rule or ordinance that relates to firearms and is more prohibitive, more prohibitive than, or that has penalty that is greater than any state law penalty. A political subdivision's rule or ordinance that relates to firearms and that is inconsistent with or more restrictive than state law, whether enacted before or after July 29th, 2010, is null and void.
So I understand that. I have to stop you because we aren't allowed to take new evidence and I'm not exactly, I don't remember those being stated in the initial.
The Arizona state statutes?
I don't remember those being stated in the initial proceedings. And, and I do, I'm, I'm familiar with some of the Arizona statutes and rather than bring them up, there is, there's limits to where and when you can fire firearms, even on your own property.
There is. And the current ruling goes, moreover, what, I, I think.
I don't want to get into that. I asked you the question. You didn't really answer it. I know.
Well, I'm trying to because it's, it's not as patently clear as the, the narrative and the documentation seems to state.
But I want to stop you because it seems like this argument should be made in front of planning and zoning whenever you're getting your zoning.
And, and I tried. And I was working with planning and zoning, Dan Coxworth, before they slapped me with these rulings that were unprovoked. The fact of the matter is military, they're allowed to conduct their training underneath federal exemptions, state exemptions. I am not the military. All of the complaints that we're here to hear today are about Black Hawk activity. Does Owen Lonsdale owner operate a Black Hawk?
Well.
No. Is Owen a member of the United States forces?
This argument should be made in front of planning and zoning when you file the paperwork to get your.
And, and I tried to do, but the irony of this and why we're appealing today is that there was error and bias in the initial hearing. And I was not afforded the proper procedures to do cross testimony of the witnesses. I was not able to voice any, any of the narrative whatsoever. And that's part of the reason why we're in the situation as it stands now.
So you, you need to do what we said. Okay. I, I'm ready. Go ahead.
I, I, I move that we affirm the actions of the hearing officer.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to affirm the actions of the hearing officer. And now we will vote. All in favor say aye.
I, I got more discussion.
Oh, we have more discussion. We won't.
Yeah, I'm going to reiterate. I, I noted that I think the, that the words any are too broad. And we talked about that, how it applies to section 607 on a couple of points. And I, I want my desires for Mr. Lonsdale to be able to use his property as, as he sees fit to the greatest extent. And I don't expect everyone to know all county regulations. I don't. And Mr. Lonsdale is still able to seek the special use authorizations. And that is part of the order that we see in point number one, point number two. That's what you need to pursue. And one is easily capable of unknowingly violating county regulations. So I'd like to point that out. So as Mr. Lonsdale is still able to seek the special use authorizations, I think we all agree with that.
All right. Any more comment?
May.
Our board, I'm just asking the board.
May I add to that?
You don't need to make any more comments. I'm, I'm sorry. This is something really that you need, you just need to follow with. What we decide, whether we uphold the hearing officer or not, we're going to vote. So all in favor. that you need, you just need to follow with what we decide, whether we uphold the hearing officer or not. We're going to vote. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye, and the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Lonsdale. This is over. Can I adjourn now, or do I have to announce another meeting? Oh, I have more words. This is not a normal meeting. This is, this, there's a lot of words for this meeting. Okay, so written notice of the formal action by the Board of Supervisors shall be mailed by certified mail to all parties within 10 days of today's decision. The board's next meeting is Thursday, May 25th at 10 a.m. It is a work session on the rescinding of Title 42. So the meeting is now adjourned.